I'd like to call this work session to order. And if you would, Lucy, go ahead and call the board.
Mr. Marlowe?
Here.
Eugene?
Here.
Mayor Steph?
Here.
Brenda?
Here.
Steve?
Here.
John?
Here.
Thank you. Mayor, have a good one.
All right, thank you very much. Okay, this is a work session. It is not a business session, and no business will transpire during this session. No business, so we'll turn stuff on down and turn it off, please. All right, I'd like to call this work session to order. And if you would, Lucy, go ahead and call the board.
Mr. Marlowe?
Here.
Eugene?
Here.
Mayor Steph?
Here.
Brenda?
Here.
Steve?
Here.
John?
Here.
Thank you. Mayor, have a good one.
All right, thank you very much. Okay, this is a work session. It is not a business session, and no business will transpire during this session. No business, so we'll turn stuff on down and turn it off, please. All right, the purpose of this work session is to try and develop a ordinance for to abatement of nuisances. All right, I handed out two copies at the last meeting. And of the two, as I started reading through them, I kind of liked, I came to a point where I think the better one is the longest one, because it does go into a lot more detail. And the examples that I provided you, I guess the one that's 15 pages. Is there, that's my preference, is the longer one. And what's the council think? Which one should we concentrate on?
I'd say we go with the long one.
Go with the long?
Go with the long one.
Okay. And like I said, it goes in a lot more detail on procedures and processes. It does, one of the, one of the big things of this longer one is the creation of a nuisance abatement board. And at least three people will make up that board. Hopefully, we'll be able to have some volunteers from the community to fill this position, should we adopt this ordinance. I think we'll be able to fill the three positions. It does have stipulation in there that if we failed, or if we don't have any volunteers for that, the council can perform the duties of the board, the mayor, and at least two council persons. So, you know, there is a workaround for that. Anyway, all right, well, I'll put the other one off to the side. All right. In, when you read over these examples, before I put this one away completely, was there anything in the shorter version that you particularly liked or disliked? That we might be able to incorporate into the other one if we need to, need to?
Well, my only question on the short one was personnel to perform the job. You know, it states in there somewhere, you, a person, or persons to take care of the ordinances?
Yeah.
And if it's in the longer one here, then I'll probably take care of it.
Yeah, for the most part. There was nothing in the shorter version that stood out as something unique? There wasn't, in some form or fashion, covered by the longer one? But that was my, that was my opinion. Everyone wanted to find out, you know? Okay?
One question is that if somebody's working on a car that's not running, but they're working, trying to get it to run, we're not gonna make them get rid of that, are we?
Well, according to the, this longer version, the nuisance abatement board will only address those items that we've received a complaint about. It didn't say who had to make the complaint, but it just stipulated that they would address any complaint that was made. And up to, it's up to the board at that point to determine. Now, if, say, somebody is working on their car and somebody complains about it, all right, we don't have to take action for 30 days, all right? We need to take action within 30 days. And then once action is taken, then there's a notification process that has got, we have to go through. And then they have the ability to request a hearing on it, to be heard. So there are avenues to address if somebody complains and it is somebody working on a car that's just taking a longer, you know, a two-year job now. They're going to go along with, and I don't think we should. But, you know, two, three weeks, month, maybe, on the outside. Unless it's inside. That kind of work, if it's going to take more than a month to do, it needs to be inside a garage somewhere, being done there, not in the yard. Okay? And I think one of them, and I'm gonna have to...
Yeah, the short one is not that it makes a difference.
A 72-hour, I think, if a vehicle is left for 72 hours, that it's deemed, may be deemed a nuisance. Anyway, we can, if it's in the short one and not, I don't recall, yeah, it's a section two paragraph B in the shorter version. It says, "Left at any place on the street or highway." And that specifies more directly, "Somebody parked a car out here, it broke down, and they were trying to fix it out here in the garage, in the parking lot. And if it had been here past 72 hours, then it's deemed a nuisance, or can be." So, but this one does specify, "Left at any place on the street or highway." So, you know, that one's a little more specific. The longer one, I don't believe, had that particular, that particular timeframe in mind. All right, let me go ahead and start with, the longer one, we'll go ahead and proceed with it, and go with section intergrat at your time, to see if anybody has any objections or wishes to add anything. All right. Let's see, is, the ordinance will be numbered once we decide on how we want to proceed. All right, an ordinance defining nuisances, establishing a procedure for abatement of nuisances, and providing penalties for violations of its provisions. Be it ordained by the town council of County Line, Alabama, as follows. Section 1-1, the purpose. This ordinance establishes the definition of nuisance, nuisances, establishes a procedure for the abatement of nuisances, and provides for penalties for violation of its provisions. Nuisances, section 1-2, a definition. For the purpose of this chapter to term nuisance shall mean anything that unlawfully creates hurt, inconvenience, or damage. That class of wrongs that arise from the unreasonable, unaworkable, or unlawful use by a person of his own property, either real or personal, or from his own improper, inducing, unsightly, or unlawful personal conduct, working an obstruction of or injury to the right of another or of the public, and producing material annoyance, inconvenience, discomfort, or hurt to any, to another person or to the general public. Anything which is injurious to health, or is indecent or offensive to the senses, or an obstruction to the free use of property, as so as to interfere with the comfortable enjoyment of life of property of another. Questions or comments on section 1-1, 1-2, really?
Okay?
Now, is this talking about other things besides the car?
Yeah, this is basically covering anything that, as it says, is objectionable, unsightly, assaults the senses, that smell.
Okay, if you were, let me just say this, is it, like, you were burning on a regular basis, you burn stuff that, that smokes up the whole neighborhood, and people with allergies are irritated from this, their health is...
That could, that...
They can't open their back doors because they've got that scent coming in.
Yeah, that could be a thing, declared a nuisance, if it's a regular occurrence.
I get calls about that every time a certain property person...
But, yes.
...burns things that smell.
It's kind of a catch-all paragraph, I mean, I think it, kind of touches on just about everything. Unsightly...
Of car vehicles in the yard dismantled.
That...
Stuff spilled around the house, the building covered with blue tar.
That could be, could be.
Someone has to complain to the town about that kind of complaint.
Yeah, it doesn't say who has to complain. Okay? But this is kind of a broad definition of what could be...
I'm not gonna complain, but nobody else can.
And then when they call me, I can say.
Right, and that's, that's the reason for the nuisance abatement board, is to take a complaint, investigate it, come to a conclusion, yes, no. So, and that's why I want to get somebody out in, you know, the community involved with this. It's not the council saying, the council will issue the resolutions declaring a nuisance, but the board is the one that's going to decide what to present to the council. Okay? All right, any other questions on section 1-2? Okay? Section 1-3, nuisance unlawful. It shall be unlawful for any person to permit or maintain the existence of any nuisance on any property under his control. Section, any questions on that part of it? All right, section 1-4, town council nuisance abatement board to enforce ordinance. All right, the mayor and the town council shall, by separate ordinance, appoint a nuisance abatement board to enforce the provisions of this ordinance, until such time as the town establishes the office of building inspector, building official, vector controls supervisor, director of public works, fire marshal, health officer, or such other town employee as may be designated by the town council. Said separate ordinance provides that. In the event no citizens or desirous, desirous of volunteer for service on the NAB, just a short for nuisance abatement board, then the mayor and two council persons shall serve as the, as said board, pending establishment of any of the four said positions by the town. The NAB, upon resolution of the town council, shall inspect any nuisance reported by letter, in person, or by telephone to the town council at meetings, or to the mayor, clerk, or individual member of the town council, by any citizen of the town of County Line, for considerations to abate by the town council. The town council shall serve as the officer for the town of County Line. A majority vote shall be required by council for abatement of any nuisance. Okay?
That's clear.
This is the establishment of the board, and requires a separate ordinance. Separate ordinance would define the positions of the board and the responsibilities and their procedures. Another ordinance. But that one should be fairly simple. Any questions or comments on paragraphs or section 1-4? Okay? Section 1-5, dangerous buildings, structures, and conditions. Section 1-5-8, all buildings, structures, or conditions which are, one, unsafe as defined in the 1985 Standard Unsafe Building Abatement Code; two, not provided with adequate egress; or three, which constitute a fire hazard; or four, are otherwise dangerous to human life; or five, which in relation to existing use constitute a hazard to safety or health by the reasons of inadequate maintenance, dilapidation, obsolescence, abandonment, or accumulation of rubbish and debris, or hereby declare to be dangerous buildings, structures, and conditions. All such dangerous buildings, structures, or conditions are hereby, hereby declared to be a nuisance. It shall be unlawful to permit any such dangerous building, structure, or condition to remain or continue existence in any place after receiving an order from the town council to abate the same by repair, rehabilitation, demolition, or removal. It shall be unlawful to occupy any building or structure, or permit it to be occupied while it is or remains a nuisance. Questions or comments on 8, or 1-5-8? Okay? I did add this section to this. Section 1-5-B, all mobile homes are conditions which were unsafe as defined in the 1985 Standard Unsafe Building Abatement Code, not provided with adequate egress, or which constitute a fire hazard, or are otherwise dangerous to human life, or which in relation to existing use constitute a hazard to safety or health by the reason of inadequate, inadequate maintenance, dilapidation, obsolescence, abandonment, or accumulation of rubbish and debris, or hereby declare to be dangerous mobile homes and conditions. All such dangerous mobile homes or conditions are hereby declared to be a nuisance. It shall be unlawful to permit any such dangerous mobile home or condition to remain or continue to exist, continue in existence in any place after receiving an order from the town council to abate the same by repair, rehabilitation, demolition, or removal. It shall be unlawful to occupy any mobile home, or permit it to be occupied while it is or remains a nuisance. The reason, this is pretty much word for word of the previous paragraph, but the reason I put it in here is to separate it from buildings and structures, because later on, it defines the time period that the individual has to, to take care of the issue. Mobile homes fell under, with, the way I read it, a mobile home could have been interpreted as a structure, and would have six months, or, you know, 120 days, 160 days.
Is this kind of, I mean, just like with the trailer parks, they're grandfathered in, and you can't?
Well, they grandfathered in the new mobile home park regulations of spacing, et cetera. This, and too, we did identify abandoned mobile homes, or no deconstruction of mobile homes in the park. This takes a little bit, you know, this gives us a little bit more leverage to address...
But, I mean, is it gonna be legal since that, those are grandfathered in?
They're, they're not grandfathered in on condition of the trailers. If they bring in a new trailer, they're gonna have to meet the requirements that we set for it. The trailers that exist now, if they're, you know, a nuisance, then that fall, that's a different category. They're not grandfathered in for habitability. If, you know, they're not grandfathered in when they bring in another, a new mobile home. They have to abide by the new ordinance. The old trailers that are out there now, that are inhabitable, that are, you know, pigsty, no power, no water, those are nuisances. Yeah?
Well, I, the reason I'm asking is because we don't want to get in a lawsuit if, if the ones that are still occupied, even though they're not habitable.
Well, again, it comes to, do we have a complaint on it?
Why does that confirm?
Yeah, it, we're not gonna, we're not going to go out and seek problems. This gives the citizens of the town of County Line an option, or an avenue, to address what they consider to be a nuisance. And we define it, and we provide steps to be taken once one is identified. So, okay? Anyway, that's, I think mobile homes need to be, because we do have some dilapidated homes that...
Yeah, there's two, and the one that's, all the windows and doors are off of them, and they're just in that trailer park at the end of Coffee Hill on the right.
Yeah.
Some things very, and...
Yeah, anyway, all right. Any other questions or comments on section 1-5-B? All right, section 1-6, vegetation, grass, plants, and weeds. A, a, any vegetation, weeds, grass, or plants, other than trees, bushes, flowers, or other ornamental plants, under proper care and cultivation, which have grown to a height of 12 inches or more on any lot or tract of land in the town, are hereby, hereby declared to be a nuisance. It shall be unlawful to permit any such weed, grass, or plant to grow or remain in any place after receiving an order from the town council to remove the same. All right, I think the original example had 24 inches instead of 12 inches. Anybody have a problem with the 12-inch? Okay? All right, all right. B, in the case of a large tract of land on which no structure is situated, the provision of this section shall only apply to those portions of said tract which are within 300 feet of a structure, or a public road, public road, street, avenue, highway, or other public right-of-way. The town council, the town council may, for good cause, reduce the area subject to this section to a lesser distance. All portions of such tracts shall be subject to all other provisions of this chapter. Okay? 300 feet from a structure, okay, or a street, I have a problem with... I think 300 feet from a road is excessive. This might be, may, we may need to word this in such way as to exclude agricultural zoned property, or to exclude property zone as agricultural, and then it's from, to the fence line, or something to that effect. So, in case of large tracts of land, of structure, all right?
Talk about agriculture, is that for cattle or?
Farmer, pasture land.
Or plowing and farms or something?
Yeah, like most of the, like across from green acres, a pasture across the road. I don't think we should force him to, to cut the grass three hundred feet beyond, outside the road. I think we should exclude agriculture zoning or agricultural zoned land.
Oh, by the way, we saw ten turkeys out there in that field across from my house.
Because some of them let their pastures grow up for hay, don't they?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Cut twice a year or something.
Make them cut their, keep their hay cut down.
The one across the county line, they cut it at least twice a year, don't they?
Yeah.
Take care of it.
I know, Alan.
You tell them little ponies out there.
All right.
So you're going to exclude, exclude the three hundred feet or?
Well, the, the three hundred foot, the distance, exclude property zone as agricultural is exempt from the three hundred foot. Or property zone is agricultural is excluded from the three hundred foot requirement.
Does that have to be three hundred feet or what you do have property that's right on the road?
Yeah, well, I mean, it's, that's just, it doesn't have to be three hundred. It could be, you know, fifty feet if, for I'm concerned.
How far does the right-of-way go back? Off the road, how far does the right-of-way go back? Because you've got wooded areas on down County Line Road there. You've got woods that come up to.
Yeah, well, I mean, but that's, the county line, property line doesn't go too far down that way. But the, the county along the highways, the county takes care of cutting the grass on the right-of-way.
Okay, yeah.
Not on Dinsbury and Copperdale, not most of the time.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. No comment. Anyway, I, we can exclude agricultural. But, you know, like I said, three hundred feet was just more down here. And, you know, my first thought was, that's a lot.
Yeah.
That's a lot for any structure. A lot of people don't have three hundred feet around their, their structure. I would say, would a hundred feet be better?
I would think so. But we do have some structures that are own property that's owned by somebody else. And the land gets this high grass and is cut once a year.
Yeah.
I mean, there's, there's probably three hundred feet between the road and what the structure says.
Yeah. Yeah, that's, okay, I have no problem with that. Hundred feet sound good to everybody, or do we need to reduce it further? Hundred?
Change it to one hundred feet.
That's for agriculture.
Now, that's for all other.
All of it, okay.
And then the agriculture would still be exempt.
Yeah, up to the fence. Well, from the, from the road up to the fence. If it's.
So it's going to read, oh, within one hundred feet, one hundred feet of a structure or public road?
Yeah.
But we do a C to include the, to note that it's not under, at a C and so there it's not to include this. This is not to include agricultural zoned areas.
Agricultural zones.
Agricultural zones area will be, will be excluded from the hundred foot requirement. I don't know these, um, and we've got a designation for agricultural zoning like farm or F one or some, I don't remember. We'll, we'll look it up, I'll look it up.
Zone, they order?
Yeah, well, I've got a copy of it, but it'll be zoned by, zoned as F one or whatever, A one agricultural. All right. Section one dash seven. It said debris, rubbish, et cetera, an accumulation of debris, trash, I think it's brush, bush, used building materials, refuse, remains of a building demolition, remains of a fire, parts of a building or parts of a untenable structure on any lot or tract of land in the town is hereby declared to be a nuisance. It shall be unlawful to permit any such accumulation to remain or continue to exist in any place after receiving an order from the town council to remove the same. Okay, questions, comments? Okay, all right. Section one dash eight. Machinery, vehicles, et cetera, in residential area. Storage of used building material, machinery, vehicles, parts of vehicles, or any other material which may provide a breeding place for, of mosquitoes, harmful insects, or rodents, or is so unsightly as to be offensive to the neighborhood in the town. To be offensive to the neighborhood in the town limits is hereby declared to be a nuisance. It shall be unlawful to permit such storage to continue after receiving an order from the town council to remove same.
Shouldn't that say from the town council?
Yep. Okay, all right. Any other questions, comments on one dash eight? All right. One dash nine. Area, area of responsibility. It shall be the responsibility of owners, agents, occupants, and leases to keep their property free of nuisances. Owners, agents, occupants, and leases whose properties face on municipal streets or right-of-way shall be responsible for keeping the property free of nuisances to the municipal street and or right-of-way. Owners, agents, occupants, and leases whose property face on municipal alley shall be reasonably responsible for keeping the area from the property to the center line of the alley free of nuisances. Any questions, comments? Section ten. Notice to abate nuisance. A. Whenever in the opinion of the NAB finds that a nuisance exists as defined in the chapter or ordinance, the board shall order the owner, agent, occupant, mortgagee, or leasing of the property to be determined by the town attorney by conducting a total search of records in Blount or Jefferson County Probate Office if necessary on which the nuisance is located to abate the same. Abatement shall mean full and complete removal of any nuisance declared under sections one dash five, one dash six, one dash seven, and one dash eight, or one dash eight of this chapter. Abatement shall mean either repair, rehabilitation, demolition, or removal or shall, as shall be determined by the NAB as a proper remedy for any nuisance declared under section one dash four of this chapter. Questions, comments? All right. B. The NAB shall give written notice to the town council of its inspections and findings of the existence of the nuisance and that the board has provided notice of the nuisance present to paragraph A above to the owner, agent, occupant, mortgagee, or leasing of the nuisance and the matter in which the nuisance is to be abated. Questions? C. The town council shall pass by majority vote a resolution to the effect of the existence of the nuisance in matter in which it shall be abated and shall state the time within which the nuisance must be abated and that the NAB shall notify the owner of said nuisance. All right? Questions? All right. D. Said resolution shall be sent by certified mail to the owner, agent, occupant, or leasing or person shown by the records of the tax assessor of Blount or Jefferson County, Alabama, who had been the person last assessed for payment of the state and count any additional tax on the property, the existence of the nuisance with the, with description, manner, and time within which the nuisance must be abated. All right? E. The resolution shall require the owner, agent, occupant, mortgagee, or leasing to complete the abatement of the nuisance within one hundred and twenty days from the date of the notice. If it is a nuisance under sections one dash five dash A, and within thirty days if it is a nuisance under section one dash five dash B, one dash six, one dash seven, or one dash eight. Provided however, the resolution may be, may stipulate a different time, but in no case more than one hundred and twenty days. Such notice shall provide or notice owner, agent, occupant, or G or L C. This same can request a hearing or file objections with the town council within sixty days of the date of notice if the notice states action to be taken under one dash five dash A. Thirty days if the notice states action is to be taken under one dash five dash B, one dash six, one dash seven, or one dash eight. All right, the notice shall contain a provision notifying the owner, agent, occupant, mortgagee, or leasing that he or she has the right to request a hearing and or object to the findings of the NAB not later than sixty days from the date of notice. Okay, questions, comments? Okay? F. Notice shall be posted on any unsafe building that the town council has passed a resolution stating this, stating this structure is unsafe its use or occupancy has been prohibited by the town council of the town or county line and shall be, be signed and dated. Said sign shall not be removed without permission of the town council. No person shall enter the structure except for the purposes of making the repair required, repairs, or demolition, demolishing the structure. All right, eleven dash, one dash eleven. Failure to comply with notice to abate. In case the owner, agent, occupant, mortgagee, or leasing shall fail, neglect, or refuse to comply with the notice to abate the nuisance and or request a hearing or object to the NAB's notice within sixty days from the date there for a violation for which notice is given under section one dash five dash A, or thirty days if a notice is given under one dash five dash B, one dash six, one dash seven, or one dash eight. The town council shall hold a public hearing authorizing the abatement of the nuisance by the town council and also before leaving an assessment on the property. In other words, you have a chance to object, have a public hearing, and then we can take further action. All right? Notice of the public hearing to determine whether the town council shall order an order to abate the nuisance shall be given by causing a notice of such hearing to be sent by certified mail to the owner, agent, occupant, mortgagee, or leasing at least ten days before the date of such hearing. The hearing shall be held within sixty days from the date of the finding of the NAB for a violation for which notice is given under section one dash five dash eight, and thirty days for a violation for which notice is given under one dash five dash B, one dash six, one dash seven, or one dash eight. Such notice shall be posted in three places, public places in the town, one being the town hall and the town county line at least five days prior to the hearing and shall be published in a general publication newspaper one time, not less than ten days prior to the hearing. C. After the public hearing, the town council made by resolution order is Dallas Council for Forest Department to proceed with work specified in such notice or may order such nuisance is demolished or removed, or the town council make contract with persons, firms, partnerships, corporations, or other legal entity to perform correct repair or abate, abate the nuisance. Nothing contained herein shall require. Nothing contained herein shall require any repairs to be made. The town may elect to abate by demolishing any nuisance. If the owner, agent, occupant, mortgagee, or leasee of the property shall appear to public hearing, no further notice of the order of the town council shall be required. If the owner, agent, occupant, mortgagee, or leasee fails to appear, notice of the order the town council shall be mailed, notice of the order of the Town of County, the town council shall be mailed to the last known address, and shall be posted for five days in three public places, one being town hall and the Town of County Line. Okay. D. Upon the expiration of seven days from the date of posting under subsection D. Or seven days from the date of the order if notice by posting is not required, the town council or his designated representative or agent shall proceed to carry out the order of the town council. I've got there. It's referencing subsection, section D, but we're in D, this is D. I might to check on that and correct that.
Should that be B? C?
They say they're gonna be, uh... B or C? It probably will be, uh, sec- section C.
Yeah, C. So strike the D and put C.
But I'll, I'll verify that. Okay, uh... All right. Number, uh, has a section one dash twelve, administrative hearing and appeal. Any owner, agent, occupant, mortgagee, or leasee receiving notice of the nuisance and NAB's findings of the nuisance, in a matter for, uh, of its abatement may no later than sixty days after the date of notice for a violation for which notice is given under section one dash five dash A, or thirty days for a violation alleged in one dash five dash B, one dash six, one dash seven, or one dash eight. Request an administrative hearing and or object to the findings of the NAB by mailing a request for a hearing and or objection to, in writing, to the findings of the NAB to the clerk of the Town of County Line. Failure of any agent, owner, agent, occupant, mortgagee, or leasee to notify the clerk in writing requesting a hearing and or objecting to the findings of the NAB within sixty days from the date of notice set, or a violation for which notice is sent under one dash five dash A, thirty days for violation for, uh, which notice is sent under one dash five dash B, one dash six, one dash seven, or one da- or one dash eight, weighs any and all rights to an administrative hearing. All right, B. When an owner, agent, occupant, mortgagee, or leasee notifies the clerk of the Town of County Line in writing of the request for a hearing and or objections to the NAB's findings, the clerk shall notify the town, the mayor and town council forthwith of said request for hearing and or objection, and the mayor and town council shall set a date for the administrative hearing within not less than ten day, ten, and no more than sixty days after the date the request in writing is made for the hearing and or, uh, objection for a violation for which notice is given under five, one dash five dash A, or, uh, thirty days for a violation which notice was given under one dash five dash B, and one dash six, one dash seven, or one dash eight. Notice of the hearing before the town council shall be published one time in a newspaper of general circulation in, in the town, not less than ten days prior to the hearing. Additionally, the town clerk shall cause notice of hearing to be posted in three public places, one being the town hall and the Town of County Line, no later than ten days prior to the hearing. And that, uh... We need to change that, uh, shall be published in a newspaper of general circulation, period, not less than ten day, uh, to remove in the town.
I know it would be easy to publish it in the, in the, like in the Democrat, or the Blount County.
Right.
Uh, and you could, and post it in here at the town hall. The only other place I know to post it would be up here at the fork of the road on the post.
The, uh, telephone pole up at the four-way. And the telephone pole out here.
And on the telephone pole out here, and on our door.
Yep.
Okay.
I mean, there's just no, there's not that many places to post notices.
No, not in public places.
The same place that we have to, uh, post the notices of elections.
Okay, okay.
So, uh, but yeah, it's, uh, publishing, depending on whether it's in Jefferson or Blount County. If it's Blount County, we do it in Blount County, and if it's in Jefferson County, either the Business News or the, uh, North Jefferson.
Oh, Jefferson, uh-huh.
Something like that. Uh, anyway. All right, uh, C. At said hearing, the owner, agent, occupant, mortgagee, or leasee shall present his reason as to why his decision of the NAB should not be followed, as well as present evidence to the town council as to any objection which said owner, agent, occupant, mortgagee, or leasee has to the findings of the NAB's findings. The town council shall then, after presentation of the evidence and argument of the owner, agent, occupant, mortgagee, uh, or leasee of the property, as well as in receiving evidence from the NAB, shall make the findings to uphold the NAB's findings and determine whether the building or structure is unsafe to the extent that it creates a, uh, public nuisance, or find in favor of the owner, agent, occupant, mortgagee, or leasee that a building is not unsafe, nor does the building or structure create a public nuisance, in the case of a violation of which notice was given under, uh, one dash five dash A. Should the town council make a finding that the building or structure is unsafe, and that said building or structure is to be, to be demolished and removed within thirty days following the date of the, uh, council's determination. Uh, if the violation, if the notice of violation pertains to section one dash five dash B, one dash six, one dash seven, or one dash eight, then the council may order the nuisance abated, removed, cut, or take other action consistent with this article to abate, remove, or otherwise remedy the nuisance. All right, questions or comments? Okay. All right, uh, D. If any owner, agent, occupant, mortgagee, or leasee is in disagreement with the findings of the town council, said person may appeal the decision of the town council within thirty days of the date of the determination by the ca- town council, by appealing to the circuit court of Blount or Jefferson County, Alabama, by filing with the clerk of the court of Blount or Jefferson County, Alabama. Notice of the appeal and bond for security of cause in the form an amount approved by the circuit clerk. Upon filing of the notice of appeal and bond for security of cause, the town council shall suspend its order, providing for the abatement of the nuisance, demolition, and or removal of the same pending the appeal and outcome of this, of the same in circuit court. So they have multiple avenues to object, uh, you know, request a, a public hearing to voice their, you know, to present their evidences to, uh, say it's not a nuisance, and if they still disagree, they can go to, you know, take us to circuit court. Okay, all right, uh, one dash thirteen. Nuisance abatement board, the NAB may consist of private citizens appointed to the board, or if none volunteer to serve on said board, the board may consist of the mayor and town council members. Furthermore, the Town of County Line may, uh, contract with private contractors for the purpose of, uh, demolishing, abating, removing, cutting, cleaning, or otherwise remedying, remedying the nuisance. This section authorizes the entry by any member of the NAB, private citizen, uh, comprising membership of the board, mayor, and council members if applicable, as well as any private contractor, volunteer fireman, et cetera, hired by the town for abating the nuisance onto the real property being investigated for the first purpose of examining and inspecting the exterior of a building and or structure to ascertain whether said building and or structure falls within the provisions of one dash five dash eight hereof, and or for the purpose of establishing whether a nuisance exists under the provisions of one dash five dash B, one dash six, one dash seven, or one dash eight hereon. Said authorized personnel shall not have permission and right to enter, of entry to the interior of any building or structure without first having obtained prior written consent of the owner and or occupant thereof. Additionally, this section authorizes the entry onto real property by any of the aforementioned members, private contractors, and or volunteer firemen for the purposes of demolishing, burning, cutting, cleaning, and otherwise abating and or removing any nuisance in accordance with this, uh, provisions of this ordinance. Okay? Yeah, yeah, we take a quick pause, 'cause I need something. My throat's getting dry. Let's see, proceed on here, um... One dash fourteen, uh, one dash fourteen, assessment of cost. A. The town will keep accurate records of all costs associated with demolishing the building, including any contract work for the demolition, attorney fees, recording fees, certified mail fees, title search fees, and other costs and expenses incurred in connection with abatement of the nuisance. Once the building is destroyed or demolished, the town shall pass a resolution fixing the cost for demolition and removal, as well as for all costs, expenses, and fees associated with demolishing said building after deduction and or crediting the value of any salvaged material, after the sale of said salvaged material. C. Uh, the town clerk shall notify the owner, agent, occupant, mortgagee, or leasee of the cost so established, as well as provide in said notice a date for a hearing to establish a lien for, uh, special assessments based upon the fixed cost so established. The notice shall be provided five days prior to the date of the hearing by publishing the notice in a newspaper of general publication one time fifteen days prior to the hearing. Any event, no objection is made at the hearing, the fixed cost shall become a special assessment by finding and resolutions made thereof by the town council, and shall constitute a lien on the real property being the subject of the assessment. A certified copy of the resolution shall be sent by certified mail to the last addressed, address listed in a session for adverbal taxes, and a certified copy shall be published in the matters described by, for, uh, municipal ordinances. Uh, D. In the event, the owner, agent, occupant, or leasee shall fa- fail or refuse for a period of twenty-eight days to pay off and discharge the expense, expenses, the town clerk shall report to the town council at the next regular meeting following the expiration of that period, and a res- resolution passed to record the lien so established, providing the owner, agent, mortgagee, or leasee with a notice thereof. E. Any assessment against property under this section shall not be final until seven days after the adoption of the town's council. Once the assessment has become final, the town clerk shall have such resolution recorded in the office of the judge of probate of Blount or Jefferson County. Fifteen, one dash fifteen, collection of assessment remedy of the town. All right, A. In the event, the owner, agent, occupant, or leasee shall fa- fail or refuse to discharge the assessment after a period of twenty-eight days from the date the assessment was made final. The town may commence an action in any court of competent jurisdiction to recover said expenses. In addition to remedies otherwise provided for herein, the town council may cause an action to be instituted to enjoy or rebate, or abate any nuisance. One dash sixteen, continuing offenses. In all cases, the person whose duty it is to abate any nuisance shall be liable for separate and distinct offenses, for each day the nuisance is allowed to remain after it has become his duty by notice of the, uh, NAB and or town council to abate, abate it. One dash seven, penalties for violation. Any violation of this section or provisions of this chapter may be punished by a fine of not less than fifty dollars, nor more than five hundred dollars for each violation plus court cost. This shall be in addition to any assessment of cost available to the town as provided herein, herein above in the ordinance. Uh, one dash eighteen, instruction, this chapter... This chapter shall be construed to contain all powers granted to municipalities under section one dash forty dash ten, eleven dash forty-seven dash one seventeen, eleven dash forty-seven dash one thirty-one, eleven dash forty-seven dash one forty, eleven dash fifty-three A dash one dash six, and eleven dash fifty-three A dash twenty-two dash twenty-six, Code of Alabama nineteen seventy-five, providing for controlling nuisances, sanitation, and good public health and safety conditions. Section two, Adoption of Standard Code for Elimination or Repair of Unsafe Buildings. The town town council of County Line adopts the Standard Unsafe Building Abatement Code, nineteen eighty-five edition, as published by the Southern Building Code Congress International as its standard for all buildings built after that date of this, after the date of this ordinance. D. The town council of County Line of County Line shall consider all buildings inhabited in the town limits of County Line on this date of this ordinance becomes law, safe insofar as they are in a livable condition at the sign of this ordinance into law. As on vacation, it shall be at the discretion of the town council interpretation of the standard code of the elimination of or repair of unsafe buildings as to whether the building shall be considered safe at any time at any future date. Let me make a note here. Does that look like the old title that? Okay, that's, that's all right. Okay, all right, section three, repealer. All provisions of the code of the town of County Line in ordinances which are inconsistent with this ordinance are hereby repealed. Separability, so, section four. It is the intention of the town council of County Line that each separate provision of this ordinance shall be deemed independent of all other provisions herein. And it is the further intention of the town council that if any provision of this ordinance be declared invalid, all other provisions shall remain valid and enforceable. Section five, pending proceedings. Nothing in this ordinance shall be construed to effect any suit or proceeding now pending in any court or any rights acquired or liability incurred, nor any cause or causes of actions occur, occur, or existing under any code section or ordinance hereby repealed, nor shall any right or remedy of any character be lost, impaired, or affected by this ordinance. Now, that's a lawyer, that's a lawyer paragraph there. All right, effective date of the ordinance shall become effective on the first day of, about, whatever, following its adoption and publication as required by law and then approved and adopted on this date. All right, are we missing anything?
That's what I know of.
Huh?
That's what I know of.
Nothing, nothing jumps out at me right now.
Yeah.
Can, can you do a, oh, a, for instance? Mooters Jones contacts me and says this particular property is a nuisance and they burn stuff and, you know, smoke stuff I have over there and, and they got goings on over there all hours of the night and it keeps me awake and all of that. Okay, so procedure would be I let you know that this complaint was brought to me. Then you did, you, you take it from there. I'm, I'm kind of, trying to follow this.
What, what are they reporting?
All right, they, they're reporting to me that, that Joe Blow here, at his property, he's burning trash or something and it's smoking up. It comes right through their back doors. They can't sit on their back porch in the summertime because of this. And then there's gunshots over there and they're afraid the bullets are gonna come over on them.
And they need to come.
And so, and then, and they, and this goes on and on and on. I'm just, I make, I'm, I'm doing this from calls in the past.
Well, there, there has to be an actionable, you know, burning, is there burning every night, every day?
Yeah, yeah.
Consistently?
Last summer, I got a lot of calls about the burning. Smoke would just boil up over there from this place and it just comes floating across fields and people in Green Acres couldn't sit down and live at court.
Yeah, well, that, uh, yeah, it's a nuisance, but, uh...
And how do we get, how do we do it if there's? You know, what about if the police go to a certain place a lot and there's a lot of goings on there that gunshots or whatever more than one time?
Yeah, well, the consistent smoke, uh, is a probably issue in the bait, you know, stop and, you know, clean up or take your garbage out or take your garbage away.
Uh-huh.
Uh, don't burn it, no burn it. Uh, shoot, that's...
And if there's cars, if there's...
That one, I'd, I'd have to, yeah. I don't know that it would fall under a nuisance ordinance.
Yeah, if they tell me that the property next door to them is, there's cars up on blocks and they dismantled them and, and like, like I said, they're burning their trash and all that and it's running down the bay with my property right here.
Well, I mean, if there's, if there's a... If there are junk cars out there and somebody complains about it, that is something that this addresses.
Yeah.
And we can take action on that.
Uh-huh. And the...
I really have to talk to Alex about the smoke 'cause, you know, constantly, that, yeah, it's a nuisance. It's health and it's, well, we, we just say in here, smell, offensive smell.
Uh-huh.
Uh, so, yeah, we could, you know, probably take action on that.
Okay.
For what it's good to do, you know, and we can, and I hope somebody does complain about those junk cars over there.
Uh-huh, uh-huh.
So, I mean, those, those are things, uh, like this tree line here.
Uh-huh.
Or lack of tree line.
I got a call the other day and they, and this person said, do you, do, does your mayor and council not know there's an Alabama law that says if you found a junkyard, it has to be fenced?
Yeah, well, he's not, uh, he's not a, he's not a business owner. He has no business license. That's what he says. Anyway, we've not sold him a business license.
But what now?
We haven't sold him a business license.
No, no, but, but I was personally told by him that he moved his office from down there home because he was getting stove lining. They keep breaking into it down there in traffic. So he moved it home.
He admitted that he had business here.
If you have an office at home, you have an office for a business.
Yeah, he, he's conducting business. He should have a business license. Anyway, that's, that's another subject, um...
Yeah, but that's something.
But, yeah, there's...
No, I was just wondering, you know, I, I was just trying to do a scenario of, of... So that when people call me, I know how to answer them. You know, it's, it's a complaint.
Yeah.
Specify, you know...
I'd love to see him put a fence up, force him to put a fence up out here. Uh, if he doesn't want to move it, he has a choice, move it or obstruct a view. Put a fence up. A, not a chain link fence,
No.
but a fence to block view. Anyway, uh, but, yeah, it's, we're gonna take it, you know, date of time, but, uh, we've got to get, we have to have a, an ordinance first.
Yes.
And then we can start pursuing, try to get some things cleaned up.
When people complain to me, I need to say, put it in, not even come to a council meeting.
Yeah. Uh, and, you know, I know if, the last time we mentioned a nuisance ordinance and the town hall filled up, it, uh, you know, again, we're not going to be looking, I'm not going to be looking for a nuisance. If the citizens want to complain about something, then we have something that we can act on.
That's, that's, I just, yeah. Well, because NAB, they're here, we're gonna have them so they can check into it when we get a complaint. Is that what they're for?
The board, yes, they'll investigate, assess whether or not it is a nuisance. And if, in their opinion, it's a nuisance and it, uh, is a nuisance according to our, our ordinance, then they'll report to the council, or actually, they'll notify the owner and then present it to the council, uh, for us if we need to take any additional action.
But, but they don't have to tell the property owner who reported it as a nuisance, right?
Uh, if it's an anonymous, uh, report.
Well, there are some people that would take revenge
Yeah.
in this town.
Well, if somebody reports it, uh, and they give their name, we're obligated to record it and it would be a public record. Uh, but if it's an anonymous report, okay, we might get a ton of them and the board may have to look at them all, but, um, you know, that's, that's the thing the board, that's one of the responsibilities the board's gonna have. And hopefully, you know, they'll only have to meet, you know, once, twice a year or that. But we'll see, we'll see. But we gotta find somebody that's willing to do it, uh, number one. Uh, got a couple of people in mind, uh, Curtis. See if he might be interested, um... And, uh...
About Cherry?
Scott.
Oh, Cherry Hill?
Well, I, I don't, I don't want more people out of Green Acres.
Oh, okay. Yeah, we need to...
Uh, you know, Scott, Scott gets around. He's all over the town. Uh, Scott might be a good one to be on the board. But it really ought to concentrate on somebody that doesn't live in Green Acres.
Right, right.
Uh...
Curtis would be a good one.
Yeah, Curtis, uh, you know...
Give him something to do.
So, I mean, if, if you've got anybody else you want to recommend or, you know, think that might do it and be interested in doing it for us, uh, I'm all ears. But, uh, those are a couple of names that came from...
The mayor complains all the time, right?
Yeah.
Oh, he calls you in some point?
He calls me all the time.
Who?
The mayor, town.
The, the mayor?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
I'll make a suggestion that, uh, couple that we just brought into town meetings, then we get them.
Well, they're not actually, they're themselves, they don't actually live. Their son does.
The son does, okay.
And he works at UAB, so he's...
He's in research department down there, uh-huh.
Yeah, well, um, anyway.
Uh, you know, our, our electrician did tell me the other day. He said, I need to start finding tomorrow's town meetings. He, he told me he was gonna try. Start getting more involvement. Jason said he wanted to be more. Know, know more about what's going on.
Well, he does live in town a lot, doesn't he?
He works out of town, he's usually home at nine, most of the time.
Yeah, mm. All right, uh, you guys, got anything else? Uh, are you satisfied with what we've done with this so far? Uh, I've got some typos that have been noted and that one changed in the, uh, from three hundred to one hundred and the exclusion of the, uh, agriculturally zoned property, uh... I think, because like everybody else, uh, is intact. But, uh, I think I like this, this particular ordinance myself.
There, there was one that you wanted to change over there about that subsection.
What?
Page eight, page eight, that's the type up there in green. Under green, you need to change in subsection.
Yeah, it does, yeah, I've got that down in my notes.
Okay.
All right, need to verify that, but, uh, I got several, uh, and removing the paper in general circulation in the town. We don't have one.
You gonna throw the old, the short one away and throw it away?
Yeah, you can, you can throw that one away, um... All right, uh, well, the, you know, just as a, uh, for your information, the, uh, did get the, uh, alarm parts and, and I guess, I was gonna install it today, but, uh, there was, I had a problem with the base station and it took me, spent all my time trying to get it to work. Finally got it working. So I will continue working on getting that installed. But, um, anyway, it, uh, we got all the pieces. Uh, we'll have an alarm or a sensor on both doors and motion sensor in here. And I'm gonna put a motion sensor in the office because of the glass out there. Um, we do, uh, we did not have a smoke detector in this building. We do now.
We do now?
Yeah, we've got a, it's in the hall.
In the hallway?
Yeah, but, uh, it's a ten-year battery. You don't have to worry for it until, uh, twenty thirty-one.
Hopefully, we'll have a good one built in about then.
Okay, so, anyway, uh, that's all I have. Uh, if nobody else has anything?
Myrtle?
Myrtle? You wanna go home?
She's already going.
No, I'm saying, who, nobody else has got anything else?
Oh, I'll make a motion with her.
There you go, that's what we're making now. All right, Myrtle?
Man Eugene had to fix our change.
All right, Myrtle has made the motion to adjourn. Do we have a second? All right, John has seconded all in favor. All right, is unanimous this motion carried? This meeting's adjourned? Thank you very much for coming and putting up with the night. So, well...